Ms. Sander, will you call the board please?
Mrs. Coghill.
Here.
Mr. Gambiani.
Here.
Mr. Matheson.
Here.
Mr. Paulson.
Here.
Mrs. Swanson.
Here.
Mr. Groban.
Here.
Mrs. Intihar.
Here.
Dr. Harrison, do you need some applause?
Hello. My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. You know, we're not obligated to have public comment at today's meeting, but I would invite you, if you are interested in making a comment, to please come out, state your name, and address the board if you want. If no one is, I want you to offer the opportunity. Okay, then we'll get on with our first order of business, and that's action on personnel items. I would like to take a motion to accept the resignation of Dr. Brian Harris from his position as the Community Unit School District 200 Superintendent and to approve the separation agreement between the Board of Education and Dr. Harris. Mrs. Yerka.
Reluctant, with second?
Looked by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. Groban. And I know why you're calling, so I'm going to call you right back as soon as it's over. Nobody has to go first. We'll go around the table?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Matheson?
I've been on the board about a little over a year now. I've been very pleased with Dr. Harris' performance and have looked forward to working with him to help solve some of the near-term challenges of the educational funding in general, technology advancement, resolving the upcoming certified staff contract negotiations and so on. One of the first things we did as a board member was to, when I became involved, was negotiating a new five-year contract with Dr. Harris. The contract states that, you know, in item 25, termination sub-paragraph D, that a part of a unilateral termination by the superintendent. In the event of such termination, superintendent with less than 180 days or effective with an effective date other than the year-end shall pay the board liquidated damages of $40,000, which relates to much of the aggregate costs of the board in the search of obtaining a superintendent successor and/or any interim superintendents. The term is aggregate cost. The purpose of this contract is to assure orderly transition. As it stands, we have been given about two weeks' notice. As a board member, I'm very disappointed that Dr. Harris is leaving, but with that in mind, we need to proceed. As required by board operating ethics, as a board member, I was restricted from communicating, discussing this departure with any community member and accordingly was prevented, which prevented me from obtaining important community input on how to address the separation issue. At this point, I'd like to thank the board members who have worked very hard in developing a separation agreement, which I believe all of us have contributed to it. One of the key sections of the agreement with Dr. Harris, through his network of educationally-based organizations, will assist in recruiting his replacement by assisting us in identifying five or more potential candidates. Indian Prairie School District Naperville just completed a review of over 60 candidates over an extended period of time to find Dr. Prokets replacing him. As a steward of the public trust, I'm concerned that five to 10 potential leads may not be enough. I'm concerned that we are facing some difficult times in attracting excellent candidates because of the issues that I've referred to above. The settlement agreement does not call for success-only recommendations. A release prior to the performance troubles me. Why do we have to move so quickly, given the opportunity of the board members to review the situation with community members I thought would be helpful? As a board member, I have no basis to determine what the cost or method of a superintendent search, which I believe is critical in my decision to vote out of this release. The urgency here appears to be based... The urgency here is based on Dr. Harris' needs versus our responsibility. We are a destination district, and I hope we'll be able to find a replacement quickly. However, I do not believe we are facing a very disruptive period of time before the superintendent is hired. In light of the above, I can only go no on accepting the separation agreement. Thank you.
Well, I also was very sad, upset when Dr. Harris told us he would be leaving. I was part of the search process, and it is a unique person who fits in our district and can get us, you know, to the next level. So when we sighted him and just saw him grow and just took on the position and made amazing advancements, made some fabulous hires, really got us in a position of stability, and our technology has been so improved, and the curriculum, everything had moved along, and I really feel we're... You know, he has done a lot for us to get us where we are. So I'm very sad to see him leave, but I can understand, you know, his reasoning, and I think that'll help everyone to, you know, hear why. And change is hard, you know? This is putting a burden on the board and on the district, but I think there's a reason for everything, and when we... Good is going to come from bad, which seems bad and hard and terrible, but it usually turns out when you go through that, good comes from it. And so I have every confidence that we will find someone. Going through 60 candidates in Naperville seemed... They might have had that many applications, but they certainly didn't consider anywhere near that. When we had used a search firm, we did much better when it was people reaching out. Because anyone that's going to a search firm, you know, they're not happy where they are, or they're, you know, it's better to find someone like Harris has found Dr. Harris, is already in place. So we'll see. But I... And it's not just, you know, Dr. Harris is not just doing that for us. He's got 10 points or more that he's going to help us with, and just knowing him, I know he's going to do everything he can to help us with this transition and just do whatever we need to... So I, to me, that's priceless, really, to have a good transition and, you know, work that money. And I'm very optimistic that he'll help us find someone.
Mr. Gambiani?
Are we commenting on the separation agreement or commenting on the resignation?
Well, the resignation and the separation agreement are one in the same motion, so that's what we're commenting.
Good. Well, first of all, Dr. Harris, I want to thank you for your service to the district and wish you much success in your new role. I also appreciate your willingness to assist the district during this transition period. However, for me personally, this arrangement as outlined within the separation agreement does not justify the board waiving your $40,000 separation fee due to the district. And therefore, I cannot reconcile this financial element of the agreement and therefore will not support the separation agreement as well. But thank you again for your service.
Mr. Paulson?
Well, I've had a variety of motions over the last few weeks. I think I've hit both kinds of the Skype multiple times. Never wanted this day to come, but I always knew that it could. And I remember a year ago when Jim and I were first meeting, we got the opportunity to participate in the contract, and I was excited about it. I anticipated a long relationship, and, you know, the market is the market, and you just have to live with it. So I wish you well. I'm happy for you and your family. I understand all these issues. For the district, we just have to move forward. I'm excited about the opportunity to communicate with people and give them a full night's sleep.
Mrs. Swanson?
Well, Dr. Harris, you know, two weeks ago, I certainly didn't expect to be sitting at this meeting. And I certainly don't want to be sitting here today, but as Joanne alluded to, I was one of the three original board members still sitting at the table who took a chance on you, really, as an untried superintendent. And that decision paid off very, very well for our district. I think we gave you the opportunity to shine, but I know that you made us shine. And in my opinion, I've said this to you, I've said this to the whole board, I'll say it through camera, this has been the best board superintendent partnership in my 15 years on the board. It truly has. So it's really not surprising that your value as a superintendent would be recognized and sought after by another high-performing district. I'm certainly disappointed to see you leave. I'm disappointed on my own behalf, because I've enjoyed that working relationship. I'm disappointed on behalf of the entire community and our good staff, who I think is losing a fine, fine leader just way, way too early. Because of your work, as people pointed out, we are in a good position to move to the next step on several levels, several fronts, and we will do that. We will do that. But I'm really sad that you're not going to be with us. That's my regret, that you won't be with us to see the fruits of what are really your labor for us. So, you know, with all you've done for us, you have earned my full faith and confidence that the value of your expertise during this transition period is going to pay off for us as well as our original decision to hire you, if not better. And with that, as well as a continuing relationship with you into the future, you know, you're not... You're still going to be in Illinois, you're still going to be around, still have a phone, so a good relationship in the future. And I certainly expect, and I think we all expect, to see you in the future at other levels of leadership in the state. And it's, you know, it's good that, just keep remembering you got your start here. Remember that. So therefore, I support the separation agreement. I wish you well in that other district, which from henceforth onward shall not be named. And more importantly, I really do, in all seriousness, wish you all the best in all your future personal as well as professional endeavors and anything that you put in your hand. All the best to you, Dr. Harris. You've done great for us.
Mr. Groban?
Yeah, allow me to some personal reflections here. I practiced law for 33 years before I retired, and I have the honor and privilege to argue cases before appellate courts in the Illinois Supreme Court. I guarantee you, I'm feeling more emotions now than I ever have in any of those arguments I've prepared for. As I confessed to both Rosemary and Barb before this meeting, I'm probably experiencing more emotions today than I had since the first learn of Brian's and the law, and some tension to take at the age of 15. But P. that as of May, those emotions range from sorrow, from a sense of abandonment, to sadness. But at the same time, I have to keep in mind what our primary vision is as a board. And I also recognize that there are provisions in the contract, and every provision has a meaning and a purpose. And fellow board member Jim Matheson has pointed out provisions of paragraph 25D, but there's also a paragraph 25E, which allows the board and Dr. Harris in this regard to negotiate a mutual agreement with respect to the resignation and departure. In my view, our most important single mission is to educate our children, and as we say in our mission statement, to inspire excellence. And in my view, the best way to continue that mission and to promote it and accomplish it is to see if we can work out a mutual agreement with Dr. Harris, where we not only get his expertise and insight and knowledge and experience in managing this transition process, but also take advantage of his network of people he knows. He's the president of a national organization, Educators for Professional Educators, very active in Lula, and large in the district association, as well as the ISBA. And for us to accomplish our mission, I think we need to see improvement in separation. That's the foremost and most common in my mind. And I think that accomplishes that the best. There is value in his cooperation and collaboration in the transition process, as I said. We can take advantage of this network he has established with his fellow educational professionals. It sends, I think, a good message to the educational professional community that this board is willing to work and collaborate with a candidate for this position. And that's an important message. And to seek a penalty or retribution, in my mind, is to cut off our noses right ourselves. We will enhance our ability to find a replacement for Dr. Harris. That's convincing, because we are in the best position we have been in the district of knowledge ever. It's largely attributable to the good work that is being done here, our staff that is assembled, and educators in our community in this district. We also, I also want to provide the best opportunity for Faith Dolphus to succeed as our interim, and she will serve in that capacity for once a June job, lie, and August, unless we find success sooner than that. I'm hoping that be the case. I think she's a superb administrator. She has wonderful talents and abilities. And I think that can only be enhanced by entering into the separation agreement with Dr. Harris. This was not an easy decision for us to achieve and get to. There were a lot of things going back and forth, some of which were mentioned by Mr. Matheson, which began with... They were not discounted, not discounted at all, but they were shared with all of us in a number of reasons. But I want to, before I close, I want to congratulate all the board members here for working collaboratively on the terms of the separation agreement, even to the extent that they could not support the ultimate agreement of each. I think that's a winnable document we've achieved, and it was largely the result of a good collaborative working relationship on behalf of your own board. So, I've probably spoken much too long as it is, but I will accept Dr. Harris' resignation very reluctantly, and sadly, I also will support the separation agreement because I believe it's my mission to also.
Mr. Groban? Um, well, I sort of get the last word, I guess. I'm struggling to keep a smile on my face, because I am very sad to see the, you know, the board president, superintendent, you know, have a very special relationship. And I've enjoyed the year I've had to work with you as president and the years I stuck with Rosemary as vice president. We will miss you, but we know you're going to be with us in spirit. We went through this process very diligently, as Mr. Groban said, within a short period of time. All along, we stuck the advice of council, and we addressed all the concerns that board members expressed through council, even to the point of suggestions that were made last Saturday and being incorporated into the document by Monday. Our council worked over the weekend, Mr. Groban worked over the weekend to, you know, to support it. We tried our best to gain consensus on this decision. So I'm very proud, as Mr. Groban is of the board as well. And I think this agreement is really a win-win. It's making some lemonade out of one's... And because we could get, you know, $40,000 and have you say goodbye today and not see you again. And I don't think that would be good for the students, the staff, and the community of District 200. This way, we'll have a smooth transition. We've got 10 or 11 points here that ensure that you've built a great team with Mrs. Dolchis, Dr. Rimmer, Mrs. Lyakino, Dr. Menopoulos, and Mr. Mack, a great senior leadership team, oh, and Mr. Farley, I'm sorry. Just come and lend in here sometime. And, you know, we know they're going to still be here with us, and, you know, we know that they've influenced you and helped you along, as well as you. So I plan to support, vote yes for this agreement. I think it's, again, it's a win-win and something really good for our community to have in not-so-good circumstances. Would you like to speak?
I would. Well, I'm going to reference the letter I wrote, and I want to make sure I don't miss anything. First of all, I truly appreciate everybody's comments, and I also was not expecting, at least a month and a half ago, to be sitting here today having this conversation. It was not on my radar. What happens sometimes, though, you get recruited, you get an opportunity that's in front of you, and it was very, very difficult not to consider it. And it's probably the only place that would have worked for me at this point in time, given the circumstances. I have worked in that district five years previously, had personal and professional connections there, and I know the board's aware of this, but certainly weighs in on one of those reasons why. I've been privileged and honored to be the superintendent of District 200 for the last four years. You are correct. You did roll the dice before you came up double sixes, right? And I believe so. I'm very proud of the work we've done. When I say "we," it's this board, it's my staff, it's the principals that I just met with a little while ago, and across the district. We've done some very, very important work, and there's more worth ahead. However, I think it's in a good place for the next superintendent to be here and take the next step, wherever that may lead. I appreciate the opportunity to transition. These are unusual circumstances that this scenario played out, except for by the legislature, as everybody's aware of. And, you know, it weighs in on me heavily, you know, mixed emotions over the last couple of weeks for me personally. I think you all know I have a lot of personal connections to this community, and that has not been easy either. So, however, you know, the opportunity, I had some non-negotiables, and there were, you know, the district where I'm headed met everyone, and the fit there, as it was 15 years ago, still remains. And it provided me some opportunities educationally as a leader to move some things forward. And, you know, on a personal note, you know, there's pieces of weight into that as well. And it was just a too good of a chance, you know, of an offer to not pay attention to and accept. You know, I want to comment briefly on the separation agreement. First, I want to thank the board for working with me on that. I will work diligently to meet every single one of those, not only because they're listed there, because it's the right way to do it. And I will do that. And I will work hard to backfill this position, as I've done with every other position that we've had. So I appreciate the cooperation, as I've had ever since I've been here, and, yeah, we bring support that you've shown me as a board. Thank you.
Dr. Harris? Is there any further discussion?
Oh, just one. I was not practicing law, by the way. For the record. For the record, I want that out there.
Now, when I said we stuck the advice of council, it was the advice of our district council. Thank you for clarifying that. I would have never thought that that would happen, because I see you so much as a fellow board member, but yes. Okay, is there any other discussion? All right, then, Mrs. Sander, will you call the board please?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Groban?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
No.
Mrs. Coghill?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
No.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes. Most impressive.
Thank you. Okay, we have another order of business here, and I would like to take a motion to approve the agreement to appoint Ms. Faith Dolphus as the interim superintendent for Community Unit School District 200, with compensation at the rate of $300 per day during the term of May 30th, 2014, through August 31st, 2014, or through the start date of a new superintendent, whichever date is earlier, and with the understanding that Ms. Dolphus will continue to serve in her current position as Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services.
I will take this one very carefully. I'm so...
Looked by Mrs. Swanson?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Coghill. Is there any discussion?
You know, great, great choice. We have so many talented people on our staff that it's great that we have that pool to juice from, and to con it. You know, you guys in the senior leadership have always been faithful and above and beyond, and I just can't tell you how much it means to know not to have to worry that things are in good hands during this period. And you will be a great base to the district, and I know you're going to get a lot of support from all of your other colleagues as well, so...
I had the opportunity to meet with a couple of the senior staff to split that responsibility between the partners. I just want to echo Rosemary's, you guys are great. I'm delighted that you picked up this position. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say that I'm looking forward to working with you, and I hope that if we get our fingers in the pot too much, you slap us back, because I think, you know, your staff and your senior staff are more than capable of directing us through this period, and that feels very important, so, you know, if you need our help, please call us.
Anyone else?
We will be there for you. You just, you know, if you're taking it up. It's a good thing it's summer, that's all right. But, you know, again, such a great team of leaders. And so we do thank you, Dr. Harris, for having you all here, and, yeah, if we're going to succeed, it'll be great, and we'll find someone to replace Mr. Van.
Mr. Paulson, Mr. Gambiani, anything? Okay, now, how can I close? I think, you know, Ms. Dolchis has led our core business now for two, three years. Has it been four, three years? And it seems like she's been here forever, because, you know, it's like time without faith is in theory, you know, you've been here and you've supported us. And one of the things that we considered when we named Faith was, you know, who would be the best person to really run our core business? And our core business is educating students, and we're very, very delighted that Ms. Dolchis has said yes. I think when we hired her, she said she never wanted to be a superintendent. She thinks that's worth a little bit, but in a room in front of it. But we know that this is our best chance to get our educational leadership carried on in the way Dr. Harris started it. But we also know that our entire senior leadership team is a very good collaborative group, and we thank all of you for working together to make this transition as smooth as possible. We're thrilled with the talent that Dr. Harris hired and brought in, and we're also thrilled with the talent he retained. So that's all part of it, is recruiting and retention. So it's a good mix that you have, and I thank you in advance for the busy summer you're going to have, for sure. Dr. Harris?
I just want to add on, I'm very proud of the individuals in here, and my team, and the senior leadership group. Each and every one of them will have a role in this transition. Obviously, somebody needs to be the boss, so Faith is certainly the best choice for this, given the circumstances. And, you know, I congratulate the board for recognizing that and seeking that, you know, part of this transition on the first item and this item will, why, it will work, and it will work well. And, you know, we will consult with each other quite often over the next couple of months, probably in the long term too, but especially in this transition period. So I think it's a wise move, and I'm very proud of not only Faith, but every one of the individuals.
Any other comments? Mrs. Sander, will you call the board please?
Mrs. Coghill?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Groban?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, is there any other business to come before the board today? Then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Roman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?